Okay, well, thank you to those who have come to our meeting this evening. The November 2nd meeting of the Durham Planning Board, and I'll call it order. We have a quorum with Ms. Kaplenger, Mr. Pearerton, and myself, John Talbot, and we're expecting a fourth member to join us shortly. And so we have the quorum, and then are there any amendments to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to the acceptance of the minutes of prior meeting. Are there any comments on the minutes? Recommended changes or otherwise?
Just in time.
Please note that our newest full-time voting member, Tyler Hutchinson, has joined us.
In the building.
Is in the building.
I would move to accept the minutes from October 5th and 12th as presented.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, raise a hand, please. Four oh, it passes. And then take us next to informational exchange on non-agenda items. Town officials, which would be Mr. Thibarge.
Yes, I have three items to just report on. The first is that I'll be meeting with the Select Board next Tuesday night at the town manager's request to discuss the ordinance amendments process for the town meeting. And I know John is going to be there, and also Lois Kilby-Chelsley from the Historic District Commission. And John has contacted Samantha from the Conservation Commission suggesting she may want to participate as well. So John will be giving a report on what we've been doing in terms of the Affordable Housing Initiative, and I suspect that Lois will be giving the Select Board an update on what they've been looking at. So that's next Tuesday night at the Select Board meeting, which happens to be the same as Election Day. Secondly, I did send out to the board an invitation to participate in the Main Municipal Association Planning Board training, which obviously with newer members, but it's also a good opportunity. Because sometimes there's changes in laws, in terms of both laws as well as lawsuits that may have affected things like public information or different rules. So they usually give you an update, plus they just go over some of the procedures, procedural issues for conducting planning board meetings. So that's on December 13th. It's a Zoom meeting. They did do workshops around the state that you had to participate in or attend. This can be done through a Zoom. And it's December 13th, four to seven PM, and the town will cover the $45 registration fee. And if you have any trouble registering, just let me know, and I'll see if I can fix it, if you're interested. And then finally, just an update on housing starts. As you may recall, that in 2018, the town adopted a new comprehensive plan that has an addendum directed toward when the town removed the growth area from the plan, as well as the building cap, number of housing starts. There was an addendum that was adopted that says that the town should track two indicators, first being the number of new housing permits that are issued in any calendar year, as well as how many lots are approved by the planning board. So up to beginning of November, there have been 30 new housing starts. And if it hits 45 or more, then the comprehensive plan provides a plan, a process for considering whether to have a moratorium and establishment of a growth area, growth plan, that would meet the state requirements as a response to a sudden surge in development. So 45 is the trigger. We monitor it through the code officer monthly reports. And the planning board has had one subdivision this year, two last year, about 26 slots, I think, total. And then this year, you've got the current one that's under review with 13 lots. So obviously, from the subdivision review standpoint, it's not even close to the trigger of 100 lots being approved. So I just wanted to let you know where we are so far. It's 30. Code Officer doesn't have any new homes applications in at this point, so you're probably not going to get another 15.
So those 30 of those actually were permits have been pulled?
Yes.
And those are new homes?
New homes, new homes being constructed. Last year, I think there were about 22 total, so it is an uptick, but interest rates just went up another .75 percent, so that's probably going to keep a damper on it for a while.
But they are new homes in subdivisions?
New homes. No, just new homes. Subdivisions is not...
Some are in, some are out.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Oh.
The permits have been pulled.
Yeah, so the 30 include Bowie Hill subdivision, and so on and so forth.
And we don't differentiate between in subdivisions or other subdivisions.
Gotcha. Okay.
And that's all.
That discussion came up at the Selectman meeting, the 45 lots. Would you send Jerry just maybe a blip that... I think I explained it correctly. The 45...
Trigger.
...permits, would you just let him know, and he could pass that on to the... So I think I actually got it right.
And Jerry's new, so he may not be aware of that.
Yeah, it was, just to be sure.
Yep.
Oh, did you have something else?
Nope.
Are there any residents of the town of Durham who would like to speak on anything that is not on the agenda? That is land use and not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to non-residents who would like to make public comment on Durham land use and not on the agenda. Seeing none, we will move on to our first business, continuing business. The substantive review of conditional use application of Celebration Tree to farm for camping, public workshops and events at 1:25 Bowie Hill Road, map 10 lot 43. And we will not take public comment. So gentlemen, Mr. Thibarge, would you like to kick us off?
Yes, I'll give just a summary for the public of the agenda notes that I provided to the planning board, which summarize the process to date, as well as what the current status of the application is. So as the notes indicate, on August 3rd, the planning board conducted the first substantive review of this application, and then scheduled a site walk. That, as well as the following meeting, were tabled at the request of the applicant. The planning board then rescheduled the site walk for October 5th, and after that, came back here and continued the substantive deliberations. The board tabled till tonight to give the applicant the opportunity to prepare some additional submissions, specifically looking for a formal parking plan that met the requirements of Article 8 of the Durham Land Use Ordinance Site Plan Review, as well as a lighting plan that would also address those requirements. And I explained last time that under the conditional use criteria provisions of the ordinance, the board can pull out standards from the site plan review without triggering an entire site plan review process if you deem that it's necessary to determine whether they meet the criteria and/or to apply conditions of approval. So that was the basis on which you requested those two pieces of information. The applicant did submit, and I put into the packet a computer-generated diagram of both the main parking area to the left or west of the entrance to where, by the barn, showing... Let's see, it was parking spaces with, I think there were 30... I have the numbers in here. 30 parking spaces with a dimension of nine and a half feet by 18 feet, and an aisle with a 24 feet. And then also the generated, a computer-generated lighting plan, which simply showed where lighting fixtures would be located and what type of lighting was proposed. And then they did the same thing for the overflow parking area with a parking diagram, as well as a lighting diagram. I did note in the agenda packet that they did not provide any illumination levels as specified in the site plan review standards for the lighting. They just simply gave locations and the type of fixtures that would be provided. The board also directed the applicant to consult with the road commissioner, and either get permits or input on the site distances from those two road entrances. Calvin did go out and do measurements, and he found that three out of the four site distances met the standard of 305 feet of view line along Bowie Hill Road for approaching cars. One of the main driveway entrance looking east would not meet it because of vegetation in the right-of-way, as well as the mailbox. And there's this precise measurement, you basically, it's a person sitting in the car, a certain distance from the pavement, when they're looking, how far can they see? So Calvin did that, and he suggested that that would need to be a condition of approval, and I've drafted conditions of approval that include that. Since publication of the agenda packet, the applicants have submitted some additional information, and I'm sure we'll want to discuss that tonight. They did submit an email, which I will distribute to you, giving more details on their plans for the lighting. And then they also responded to the draft conditions of approval that I had provided to the board, requesting some modifications to those. And I would just say, in terms of my drafting of the conditions of approval and the findings, I'm just trying to facilitate the board making a decision on this application. My intent was not to say, this is what the board should do. And what I did in preparing it is basically went through the application and looked at the minutes and the public, my recollection and my notes of the public discussion and the board deliberations. And I just tried to put down as much information as I could, and then provide that to you as a starting place for your deliberation. And then, so I would just indicate that, make any and all changes that you feel appropriate, either as a result of your own review or as input from the applicants. So, and as I said, the here, and actually, maybe we should wait until you get to deliberations on their proposed modifications to the conditional use approval, when you go through your decision-making.
To hand them out.
Yeah, I'll wait on those. You can review the lighting information and hear from the applicants.
Before we go any further, I do need to do one administrative thing. Tyler, you were not at the last meeting, so...
Correct.
Were you able to watch the video, or do you feel comfortable that you've got enough knowledge to vote this evening?
I did watch the video, and I do feel I have enough knowledge.
You may be one of our voting members. Okay, in that case, I guess the applicant would go ahead and present anything you'd like to do at this point, and then we'll get on to our discussions.
Yeah, really, I mean, there's not too much more to present. The parking map, one thing I will note just is that after the review, after the site plan or site visit, we decided to take a section of the garden out. So that's why, you know, probably looks bigger than what you envisioned there when the garden, with the garden there. So just by taking a certain section out, it allows us to then get that 60 feet, which allows the two aisles, along with the, or sorry, the two stalls, plus the 24-foot aisle. So that was all measured out, and yeah, and then similarly, I mean, the overflow, not much change there, but on the garden side. And yeah, and then I think on the lighting plan, I mean, as I stated in the additional information, I mean, you know, kind of went through all the standards, you know, we'll work to meet all those standards, still, you know, determining exact fixtures and everything, but as we purchase those, we'll make sure that, you know, it meets the right foot candle illumination levels and everything, so it's...
And when you say right, you're talking about per the town?
Per the town, yeah.
Orders.
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Any questions on, from any members of the board?
I've got a couple. The driveway with the minimal concern from the road commissioner, the veg, that's the one that is not near your house, is not, or not the rotary, right? It's the other one?
Yes, I believe it's that one that, yeah.
The rotary?
Yeah.
Not the one that we were kind of...
Basically, we need to remove vegetation, like, from between the two driveways, and then also past that driveway. So we've identified some trees and some shrubs that we can take out, and, you know, as we looked at it with the road commissioner, that was suitable.
And move the mailbox?
Yeah, we're going to move the mailbox to the, you know, essentially the west side of the driveway, yeah.
I'm just bringing it up just because I don't think it's a big deal at all, but I think your drive, that second driveway is in the resource protection, right?
The driveway on the, like, not a primary driveway.
No, the other one.
Yes, yeah.
So any veg removed there? If that's where you're talking about, the veg needs to be removed, or is it the other side?
It's all within the road right of way.
Yeah.
Right, so, yeah, good point. So it's all along that main road, not, yeah?
Yeah, it's along the main road.
Okay, doesn't even matter, okay. But now I fully understand, so thank you. And then looking at the site plan, the drawing that, the newest one in here, is the toilet still going between the yurt and the bus?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think I included that on the parking map because I was focusing on parking, not the composting.
Got it, yeah, 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 okay. Nope. That's all I got right now. Thank you.
Just one question, also on the drawings, because I don't see a label for it. How far from the road are the parking spaces?
They are about 20 feet from the road.
Okay.
There's a tree line that makes that most of that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just for, I think the ordinance says they shall be located within 25 feet of the front property line. Not exactly sure where that is on the drawing.
Where the front property line would be basically where Bowie Hill Road is.
Okay. So that would be, so right now, you're thinking it's about 20 feet?
Yeah.
Which would be slightly smaller than what we'd ask for in the ordinance.
Okay. We can discuss as we're voting if we're going to make that a condition to change it to 25? Because it's 20, you're saying it's 20 feet from the edge of the pavement?
Yeah.
Which is the, but that 20 feet includes right-of-way, which is not your property.
Yeah, I mean, so yeah, there's where that property line is exactly, so, yeah. I mean, it's, you know, it is close, and I mean, I, yeah, I mean, I did see that. I was a little unclear whether that was property lines on the, on opposite sides, like, on the edges, particularly because I've seen, like, the Get and Go Parking Lot, for example, is right next to the roadway, or Jonathan's is right next to roadway. So seeing those existing parking lots being clearly not 25 feet away from, I didn't see, I was unclear that had to be 25 feet from the road. You know, I would not want to have that be a condition for the driveway, because then that would, what that would mean is we'd be taking out more of the garden, and, you know, with the interest of conservation and also organic practices, we don't want to, you know, pave, we're not paving over anyways, but we don't want to be driving over the garden. And you're already cutting out some of that, so we could make that space, but yeah. We have, as...
While you're talking, Mr. Thibarge is, I think, looking at what...
Yeah, I was just going to point out that, as I stated previously, the board can pull out of the site plan review standards whatever you feel is appropriate and necessary. This application does not have to go through site plan review, and you make a determination that it meets all the site plan review standards. So what I would suggest is that there's a pretty dense vegetative buffer there between the road.
Yeah.
And that's one of the reasons for the 25-foot setback, is to maintain separation between parking lots and anybody uses. So I think you're okay if you accept that, whatever the distance is now with the existing mature buffer. You don't have to apply that standard.
And I'm okay with that, depending upon how much vegetation we're taking out.
Yeah.
Is it still going to be a vegetated buffer?
Yeah, there will be, I mean, because that's actually where that is, is not the section we need to take out vegetated buffer of. It is on the opposite side, so it's basically, yeah, so it's, I mean, it would be kind of in front of our house. We're still going to try to keep vegetated buffer, because we don't want to have, like, open up our house, the road, but yeah, but where the parking lot is, that's, we won't be taking anything out there.
One of my concerns is a whole bunch of headlights now flashing.
Yeah, for sure.
Trouble picturing where your neighbors are in relation to all those headlights.
No, definitely.
Tyler, anything else?
No, I think that was the one, and yeah, that's a, that's a good point about the, because it looks like the overflow lot, since that's all, the vegetation would have to be removed there, and that looks like you'd have more flexibility in that as well. So...
Yeah.
And the vegetation seems like it would give you an approximation of hundreds of feet.
Alan? The concerns have been addressed. Okay. One I have was addressed, verbally at least, in discussion with the road commissioner, is a concern about not having gravel in the parking area. My concern with that is that if it is muddy, like the four inches of rain we had the other day, dragging mud out onto Bowie Hill Road. Would you be amenable to having, I guess, what I would call a construction road, but a section of stone that, right at the entrance there? So that, a stone entrance to the drive, not asphalt, whatever, just something to help... The stone basically is supposed to pull the mud up off of the vehicles as they go, and maintaining that. So that if, you know, you had four and a half inches of rain, you had an event, and everybody started pulling out, Bowie Hill Road in both directions could get pretty slick and pretty ugly.
What's the issue with the gravel? You mentioned, the road commissioner said something about gravel.
Well, he asked to have it on the parking, he, we talked about it and asked or recommend. He was concerned, is maybe the right way to say it, that if it was all just, as it is now, just grass, that if you had a bunch of rain, it would turn to mud.
Gotcha.
So people get stuck, that's on you guys.
Yeah.
But it's, my concern is more pulling mud out into, under the road.
Yeah. And so you're, can you repeat what the stone entrance, you said, is that?
Yeah, it's probably the width of the entrance. If you don't mind, I'm going to ask one of the smarter people behind me. Construction, or behind you, the construction road, 20 feet long, what is it generally?
It's not a construction road, it's a construction stabilization, entrance stabilization. So basically, it's a certain distance from the pavement into the property at where road, so that it's loose gravel, rocks, so that any mud that's on the tires is taken off before it gets out onto the roadway. They have to do this like at construction sites, as you were mentioning.
But is that just during construction, right? And I guess what, the idea is that it'll last for a while.
That would be the intent, is that there's not a...
Normally, they pave over or create the gravel road once they're done with their construction, but I think what John is pointing to, and what Calvin was raising, you know, if that, the applicants, and I did put into the findings, that the applicant has testified, we discussed it at the site walk, that in their opinion, the substrate of that area is adequate to sustain the support of vehicles that will be expected, and there's no need to create a gravel base for it. That's their testimony. And they have, when we went out there, we saw no indication of, of course, it's been very, very dry all summer, but we saw no indication of areas where rutting and erosion. So the board can accept their testimony, and John is...
I just throw that out as a...
He's responding to Calvin's comments, that he'd be concerned that if it's not created with a proper gravel base and surfacing, that they could be tracking mud out onto Bowie Hill Road.
So that's a point of discussion. I mean, the construction road has, you know, for the subdivision probably has 120-ton dump trucks driving over it. And so it's going to get a lot, obviously, a lot more use, and it may not be necessary, but I throw that out for the discussion. Because if it does get muddy, then it's on the applicant to clean up the road after the fact, if there's a bunch of it, so. Any thoughts?
Well, I don't, you know, when we're looking at worst-case scenario, and if you're looking at 30 cars going in there, to beat something down to that, to beat the vegetation down enough to make it pulling dirt out onto the road, you'd have to be doing that on many days in a row. And from what I have heard, that is not the, what their application is going to be.
Okay. I'm good with this. I think we're saying we'll pass on that, and...
Well, I understand, I understand where Calvin is coming from, but if they were utilizing this regularly, much more regularly than what they have presented, then I'd say it would be a concern, but that is not what they're asking for.
Okay. Consensus? Okay?
That sounds good. I think I agree with Alan.
That was one of my concerns, so I think that was my only concern on that one. Other than, until we get into the meat of the commitments or what are findings of fact. Did you want to hand those out at this point?
Yes, I'll provide the applicant's comments.
So while he's doing that, Mr. Thibarge, prepare draft findings of fact for us with notes from the last meeting, things that we asked for, that the applicant agreed to. And I, if I understand this correctly, you're asking for clarification on some of those...
So, Mr. Chairman, as I mentioned in the, in the notes, I think, is that, at least for the next application, but I think the principle is the same here. What the board should do is go down through and perhaps review all the findings first, and determine, are there any that you would add, any that you would modify, or any that you would delete based on your deliberations? And then when you get to the conditions of approval, you can ask the applicant if they are willing to accept the proposed conditions of approval. You may add some, but at that point, you could have that discussion of what the applicant would like to see changed.
Okay, let's do it that way, then. So we will start with the number one on, which is public health impacts. So the conditional use review criteria and public health impacts. Are there any comments on either of those?
And if you'd like, just for the record, I'll read them, and then you can discuss them. So based on my review of the application, I determined that the board could consider the findings that the applicant on public health impacts proposes to install a leach field to handle wastewater for the proposed sink and outdoor shower. And second finding would be that the applicant's proposed to install a composting, install composting toilet outhouses, and will compost all human waste.
Well, I would move that the applicant has satisfied a reasonable burden of proof of compliance with creation of, for public health impacts.
Second?
I'll second.
Ms. Kaplenger? Any discussion? So I think, is this where I ask before we vote, to ask the applicant?
No, that would be in terms of the conditions of approval.
Okay.
Not the findings.
Okay, in that case, the vote, raise your hand or vote to approve. Four oh. Moving on to number two, please.
Yeah, the second conditional criterion is traffic safety impacts, and there was a lot more discussion on this item. First proposed finding is that the applicant submitted a parking diagram showing a parking law for 34 cars with parking space and with dimensions meeting the standards of Section 8.64E to the west of the main entrance, parallel to Bowie Hill Road with an existing forested buffer between the parking area and public roadway. B, the applicant submitted an overflow parking diagram for 18 cars accessed by the easterly entrance that meets the parking and space standards of 8.6E. C, the applicant submitted lighting plans for the main parking and overflow areas showing location of solar lights. And I would perhaps suggest an additional extension of that to indicate, and a written indication that they will meet the illumination standards of Section 8. And I'm just going to make a note of that myself.
Well, while you're making that note, I have a question on turning them off when the event's over, and setting a time that they go off at night.
Okay, so let's maybe get all of those out, and then you guys can bring up any and all.
Following your lead.
Yep. And so I'm making a note, too, that they added, submitted, added info on illumination levels. D, the applicants have testified that the substrate of the proposed parking is at... D, the applicants have testified that the substrate of the proposed parking is adequate to support the weight of vehicles without construction of gravel parking areas and access aisles. E, the road commissioner reviewed the existing site entrances and determined the easterly entrance overflow parking meets the minimum site distance for thirty-five miles per hour, which is thirty, three hundred and five feet. And that meets section one point four of appendix one of the land use ordinance. F, the road commissioner determined that the westerly main entrance does not meet the minimum site distance for thirty-five miles per hour of three hundred and five feet unless existing vegetation in the road right of way and the mailbox is ro- is cleared and the road, the mailbox is relocated. And finally, G was a condition of approval is needed to ensure that once the trees are removed, the increased site distance will be maintained by the applicants. So, you're, John, your question was about having the illumination of the parking lots, not the twenty-four hours, I'm assuming, or all night?
Yes, I mean, I, unless there's a reason for that, but pick it, if you're done at nine, turn them off. I mean, I realize people have to leave and stuff, so.
Yeah.
That sounds fine.
The board is here with that. The other question I had on that one is just a verbiage thing, but an, a letter G, if we could change trees to landscaping or plant material or something like that.
So, once the, the, road commissioner has basically stated what needs to be removed. Once that, it certainly sounds to me that the applicant agrees with that. But once that has been done, does the road commissioner need to review it again to make sure it meets the requirement? I would say yes.
I would agree with that.
So, that, that's, I'm concerned would be a condition.
I agree with that. The other two members agree?
Yeah.
Uh, road commissioner or building code enforcement or the-
A road commissioner, in part because it's within the road right of way of the town road.
I would suggest a condition on maintaining the vegetated buffer between the main parking lot and the road. I think it's just wild growth, if I remember correctly, so it's probably not hard to do, but just to make sure there's not light pollution, because I know there is a neighbor right across the street from the, the main parking lot.
Just a suggestion, you might wanna consider that under criteria number four, environmental impacts, as opposed to traffic.
Okay.
I think that's, yeah.
Hold that thought, thought.
So, John, you had mentioned things about lighting being reduced or turned off. If you're actually going to have people staying there, which you are, that'll be, could be overnight. I mean, there are walking paths that I'm quite sure that you would want illuminated.
I am thinking, my thought was that the parking lot lights closest to-
Yeah, yeah.
That would, backed by the yurts or the yurt and the trailers, you would, you would need those for safety.
Yeah.
Getting to the latrine and all that other kinda stuff. My thought is, you know, particularly you mentioned ten foot poles, those are the ones I think that we'd wanna reduce the, the light pollution. So, if you wanna clarify, to make it just along the parking lot, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Cause your walk, walking paths are illuminated with solar lights, which are very low to the ground.
Yeah, the, yeah, like really pretty dim solar lights on the ground, yeah.
Okay, yeah, my concern is just the ten foot parking, parking poles. Good question, a good point though. Any other comments on number two, traffic safety impacts? Are we ready for a vote? Mr. Tabarz, are you all set?
I'm all set.
A motion to approve?
With the conditions that we've stated.
With the conditions we've stated.
Well, we'll get to the conditions as a separate at the end. Just on the findings.
How about the changes that we, we made to changes?
The only change I, well, make sure I get them. Uh, the one was that they did submit additional information testifying that the illumination levels will be made to meet the, the section eight requirement for foot candles. And what was the other one?
And G, just that instead of trees, just plant material or something?
That's a condition.
Is that a condition?
No, that could, that should be-
I'm just lining out the word, yeah, lining out the word trees and putting plant material.
Plant material, got it.
Okay, I'll make a motion if I can.
You may.
That I can, will not create unsafe vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions when added to existing foreseeable traffic in its vicinity.
I will second.
Ms. Kaplinger and Mr. Hutchinson, seconded? All those in favor, raise your hand, please. Looks like four zero to approve.
All right, public safety impacts, again, similar to traffic, but a little bit different. The, A, the applicants have testified that they will limit maximum site occupancy during the annual craft fair to one hundred. The occupancy limits will be monitored and enforced by staff. B, the applicants have testified that they will post no parking signs on Bowie Hill Road. Uh, staff will enforce the no parking areas. And C, the applicants have testified that they will work with the fire chief and code officer to address life safety code requirements for public assembly.
Um, did we say that the occupancy was gonna be limited to a hundred for all events? Or is it just, like, you're not gonna go over a hundred for any event, right?
No, so, um, a hundred, I mean, right now it says a hundred for just the annual craft fair. Here it doesn't say that only, um, I believe, under, uh, under five B, it says, um, five B, it talks about limits, the other limits.
Uh, just to clarify, the intent here was to say, this is the most intense use of the property.
So, in other words, the-
So theoretically, if it, if it's safe with the maximum, it'll be safe for anything less than that.
You're not gonna have more than a hundred people on site at any point?
Um, not for an event.
Right, not for an event.
Yeah, I mean, like during our tree farm season, you know, people might be out in the woods, it could get right, right around there, right over there, but for the event itself, no.
Okay. So maybe we should just say, sorry, occupancy during, we'll, we'll limit occupancy to a hundred, you know, just in general.
Okay. So, strikeout during the annual craft, general craft fair, yeah?
We're still gonna have limits on other events, right? There's a fifty person limit.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's, I believe, under five, yeah.
Okay.
I don't have anything else on that. No?
Any other comments? Then, if, a motion, please?
I'll make, you go ahead, I didn't ask.
The applicant has satisfied a reasonable burden of proof of compliance with the criterion for public safety, uh, aspects, impacts.
Second, please?
I'll second.
Mr. Pirton, seconded by Ms. Kaplinger, votes to approve, raise a hand, please. Four zip.
Environmental impacts, will not create erosion and sedimentation or adverse effects on water supplies. Uh, three proposed findings. A, the applicants testified that the substrate of the proposed access aisle and parking spaces are adequate to support vehicles. No construction will be involved in those areas which are currently vegetated per the sidewalk observation and show no signs of erosion or sedimentation. B, water requirements for the water and wastewater services will be minimal. And C, the applicants have testified that all wastewater and composting will comply with public health safety standards.
Do we wanna include anything in here on resource protection, just the fact that all facilities are proposed outside of the resource protection, like is this the section?
That would be it.
Okay. What do you guys think about that? Remember, they move things in.
It's good to, it's good to address it, cause if anybody ever questioned it in the future.
To get it outs, yeah. So I'd like to add that in there.
So we'll add a D, that all facilities have been moved outside of the resource protection district.
Before we vote, the, the applicants have any concerns about that, when we add things like that on this one particular? Okay?
Am I supposed to bring up my previous comment here?
Yes, this is the place.
I actually wonder if you should go in-
If you remember what it is, Tyler.
Julia said maybe I should go in five.
For visual impact?
Yes, that's right, either one.
Okay.
Yeah, you're ready, that's even better.
I just wanna, I still feel important for the next one.
Yep.
Did you have any others?
I had no others.
Uh, a motion, are there any?
I will make the motion that the applicant has satisfied a reasonable burden of proof of compliance with the criterion for environmental impacts.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, any comments? Any further discussion on that, excuse me? Hearing none, uh, votes to approve, please raise your hand, looks like four to zip. Number five, Tyler is sitting there anxious.
Number five is a scale and intensity of use, uh, that the proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to physical size, visual impact, intensity of use and proximity to other structures. This was probably the second one that probably raised the most issues and discussion. Uh, find, proposed findings are, A, the applicants are requesting conditional use approval to expand activities to include a yurt and camper and community events. B, the applicants have testified that they will limit maximum site occupancy for the annual craft fair to one hundred and will enforce those attendance limits, and tonight, your other discussion indicated maximum occupancy at any time will be a hundred. Just one note on that, is I think their intent was to say that it would be only during the craft fair, which is one event per year, that they would reach that level. And that sounds like it's possibly changing. And that raises an issue on all of this, is that just understand, we, I understand the concern of the applicant for flexibility, but part of the difficulty for the code officer will be, if it's this moving set of targets, it's gonna be very difficult for him, if, if he gets complaints, to verify either that the applicants are in compliance or in violation. So it really needs to be as specific as possible. And if, if the applicants end up, they wanna make changes, they can come back and ask for an amended approval. So, I just think it's important for the board to be cautioned about just leaving it.
Yeah.
Lots of variation with no way to determine specificity of the limits.
That's a good point, George, if you wanna talk a little bit more about that.
Just let me, let me just get the other two, cause they relate.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, up to two monthly events will occur between April and October and will be limited to fifty. And D, no weddings will be hosted.
Okay, so, if that was, the idea was that only the craft fair will be up to a hundred or above fifty, then we could state that somewhere in here, there will be one event per year over fifty?
That is in the conditions of approval right now. Yeah, so in the conditions of approval, it says, um, one event per year. It says, um, no more than one annual event with a maximum occupancy of one hundred.
Okay, so above fifty, right? Like, cause fifty's your other max for the rest of them, okay?
Yeah, so that is in the conditions right now.
Okay. Um, and then also the new thing that we just got here about, um, so the idea is to have more, more than two monthly events?
Yeah, so, I mean, what we had brought as a change, uh, last, the last month's meeting, was saying two monthly events that have amplified music, and then having, we would have other events and workshops that can occur with limited acoustic or recorded music. Cause I mean, as a wellness center offering yoga workshops or, you know, other things around our tree farming, I mean, to only be able to have two events a month is very limiting for what, um, both, you know, for us as a farm, wellness center, and for the community that we wanna engage. And, you know, what we heard from neighbors was, you know, the amplified music being really where there's the impact. I mean, with this said, you know, we're not looking to do events every single day of the week and have them all be at fifty. I mean, a lot of these are, are smaller workshops, like a yoga class, and when, you know, talking about limited acoustic or recorded music, you know, having music during a yoga class, for example, it's not something that neighbors would be hearing and would pose a nuisance. So, that's, I mean, that's the proposed, I mean, basically what, in this document, I mean, there's a proposed change to five C, and then, I mean, similarly, there's a connection to six B and then also with the conditions of approval.
So, again, my concern is that there's no specificity. So, it could be five days a week, that there's an event in the morning with fifty people, an event in the afternoon with fifty people with music, with, you know, community, so there's no limit. There's just a statement that they don't anticipate, but, I mean, the goal is to make this business more and more successful. So, the code officer, let's just say they did have events five days a week, because there's some big celebration, Earth Day or whatever, and then they have the, the annual, or not, not the, the monthly event on Saturday with amplified music. So, it's like all week, it's that level. And if that, that still meets the criteria, the criterion in the board's judgment, that's fine. But my concern would be just a statement, it's not gonna happen very often. And so the question becomes, what does the code officer do? How does he know when they push the limit of what the board intended to limit it to for intensity and scale of use fitting the neighborhood?
I mean, I'll start it, I, I'm not sure that, um, I can hear my neighbors, it, it doesn't, they have occasional parties, doesn't bother me, but there's no amplified music or there's anything else. I think that if we go to having multiple, more than two meetings per month, playing guitars, playing whatever, people are going to hear that. That is different than what I've thought we've been going through up to this point. So, I'm reluctant to just have an unlimited number of events, an open number.
And there's a difference between in a, a community event where they have a variety show, in a, in a, a workshop where they're having eight or ten people together to discuss organic farming, a small workshop in the barn, that's a whole different thing. Again, there just needs to be some more clarity in terms of what the limits are going to be so that the code officer has the guidance that he needs.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, we're, we're open to further clarifying our limits and also just wanting to do that within a reasonable way, so we're not trying to define, like have five different categories of what, you know, we can do X number at ten, under ten, and we can do, you know, it, it just gets to a point where it becomes a little bit unwieldy, both for us and also for the code enforcement officer, cause then it would be like, wait, there's six different standards of events that. So, I wanna try to find that right balance between the flexibility and also being able to have the clarity with the code enforcement.
Same thing, you've got workshops, you've got, uh, monthly events, and then you've got annual event. So those are, I think, work, weekly workshops, uh, monthly events and annual events. And what would be the intensity levels within those? Weekly events, you could have ten people there, eight hours a day, no problem. Monthly events, fifty people, if you have fifty people every day, morning and afternoon, that's a whole different level of intensity.
How many, how many monthly events with fifty people or up to fifty people without acoustics or without the music? What, do you think you'll be having?
I mean, you know, right now, yeah.
Between your workshop size and the fifty, you know, in the-
I mean, I would say that we're at, like, we're at fifty people, I mean, two to three a month.
A month.
Yeah, I mean, we're not, you know, we also live there, so it's like, we're not, we're not wanting to have lots of events all the time. And really, I mean, the core is, you know, doing more educational workshops. Uh, but we will have the ability of our members to rent for events. I mean, and also too, like, just to note, like the variety show, I mean, it is amplified because, you know, hearing people singing, it's, it's hard to hear it acoustically, you know. But we're not talking about a metal band playing, you know, for, four hours loudly. Sometimes my son likes to play rock, I like to play with it some, you know, but like, it's not, we're not, yeah, we're not talking about like, you know, these amplified music events, like, you know, loud concerts, um, twice a month, and then, you know, we're gonna have uh, events that are fifty people all the time. So, I mean, if, you know, if it was something where we said, you know, had- I mean, if, you know, if it was something where we said, you know, had some amount up to fifty and some amount up to twenty-five, I mean, we could do something like that, um, you know, again, just trying to fight the, find the right balance between, um, you know, limit and, and flexibility there and clarity.
So for example, weekly events unlimited, maximum twenty-five people. Uh, monthly events, two per month, maximum fifty people. Annual event, a hundred people, one per year, that's just an example. And you propose whatever you think the board will, uh, will be able to accept to meet the criterion.
Yeah, I mean, I think that.
And how many of those would have music amplified or not?
That's the other issue.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
So, I mean, what I would, you know, if we were to put it kind of in those classifications, what I would propose is, um, the one, the one annual event up to a hundred, um, and then, um, two monthly events with amplification up to fifty people, one monthly event without amplification up to fifty people and then, um, unlimited events, events, workshops under twenty-five that, you know, aren't, aren't amplified, like, they might have some music like for a yoga class.
Could I clarify, were you talking about three monthly events instead of two?
Yeah, but only, one of the.
Or one of the two could have amplified.
Uh, no, two out of the three would have amplification, some form of amplification and one would have no amplification.
So, uh, my concern would be, who's keeping, where's the scorecard on this?
Well, it's just.
If I'm the code enforcement.
Well, I think if he goes over a, for, he's called over because there's a hundred people over there on a weekday.
Right.
He can say, this is not, this is, what, what is, what is this event? And it, are you, is this your one, once a year event? Uh, if he goes over there, the neighbor's complaining, there's too many people over there, he goes over and he counts twenty people on a weekday, he says, that's within the limits.
Right.
So I think, I think it works.
What about like, the monthly, like, he's like, oh, this is your second event? And.
Yeah, if they start meeting every, every weekend, uh, with fifty, fifty more people, then the code officer can say you're in violation.
Yeah, right.
So it would have to be that the code officer was called four times over in a month and then they know the violation has happened?
Correct.
Yes, he has to document that there was a violation.
Yeah. It, it's, well. I'm not questioning that it would be advi- that you would be exceeding it, but I would hate to see anything get to the point where it is a complaint that brings it some to the code enforcement's attention. And I, I think you are, I think the applicant is the same, they don't want that happening. It's, yeah, I, but at least if we put those guidelines that you had stated within this, at least there is something to monitor. I think it needs to be there.
Okay. Do you have the, do we have language?
Well, I just stated it again. I understand that they're, they're proposing an unlimited number of weekly events with a maximum occupancy of twenty-five, uh, three monthly events with a maximum occupancy of fifty, two of which can have amplified music and one annual event for a hundred people.
Bless you.
Okay, and I'm assuming that would not have amplified music?
For our, I mean, we have like Christmas music playing on a, you know, on a recording, but not, no, not, not bands, no.
No.
We're not blasting Christmas music either.
The code officer can bring a desk and read.
Well, this will be a sensitive subject, I mean, I think we wanna try and get it right, cause this is probably the one thing that's, that's neighbors, present or future may.
And again, if at any point they wanna come back and request an amendment to the approval, they can do that.
Right, right.
And, and just to clarify, in the ordinance, it says, if they come back and request a change, the board's jurisdiction is only to review the proposed change, not to review the whole conditional use approval that was granted.
Tyler, is this the area where you wanted to plug in another?
Oh, here it is, Alan, thank you.
Um, I would propose we add a condition to maintain the, uh, vegetative buffer between the main parking lot and the road, just to keep headlights down in that parking lot.
Can we just make it both parking lots?
We can't maintain in, in the other parking lot, cause you need to remove the vegetation for.
And again, actually between the parking lot and the property line, they can. It's within the road right of way that they're gonna be doing the vegetative clearing, so I think it can work.
Okay.
So, uh, the board will recognize or there'll be a finding to the, to the effect that the existing buffers between the parking lots and the roadway, uh, satisfy the buffering requirement for light purposes. I would make a motion that the.
Can we, I'm sorry, before we do that, we, um, letter D, uh, no weddings will be hosted. I struggle with the difference between, you know, weddings, bar mitzvahs, retirement parties, what, why weddings, is it?
I mean, cause weddings are bigger, I mean, a wedding is much bigger than a retirement party, I mean, I haven't hosted a bar mitzvah before, but those can be big. Um, but, you know, like, if it was a bar mitzvah, it would be still under fifty, but, I mean, yeah, just that the nature of weddings being a larger event, you know, more involved, longer. Yeah, I mean, you know, we also don't need to put it there or we, you know, or is there, I mean, I don't think it's a condition of approval.
That's all right.
Well, I think it's good to have it there because if anybody's questioning, well, how did you approve this, did you address this? And here it is in writing.
And that is, good point, that has come off the bottom.
And in agri tourism, that's pretty frequent.
Yes.
And the thing we need to remember is that this will last much longer than all of us. So whoever, you know, follows you and follows us, uh, needs to be making sure that the rules are clearly stated, so. Okay, I'm sorry, did, I interrupted.
You were saying.
No, that's. I would move that the applicant has satisfied a reasonable burden of proof of compliance with the criterion for scale, intensity of use with, based on the changes we have just discussed.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Uh, and you're good with, you've got the changes, you're comfortable with that?
Yep.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any additional comments? Those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, please raise theirs. It is three to one and I will explain my no vote, this is the one that bothers me, the vote, and so, uh, I'm just not sure that that's the, the right use here, but I believe, uh, we move on to the next one.
Uh, six is noise and hours of operation, uh, that it has to be compatible with the neighborhood with respect to noise and hours. Uh, eight, excuse me, six A, there will be a nine PM cutoff for all events, B, only recorded or acoustic, acoustic music and no amplified bands, I believe that the applicants wanna see a change to that finding.
Right, like, we just talked about up to two monthly events.
Yeah. Yeah, so I mean, a change basically is reflect that amplified music will be allowed only twice a month and at all other times, recorded or acoustic music is permitted on a limited basis at lower volumes.
What about like early morning stuff? Is there?
I mean.
It's when the rooster crows.
No, like.
Uh, we're not planning, I mean, not planning to have loud music early in the morning, I mean, if we wanted to put a, you know, between nine, nine AM to nine PM, we could do that, I mean, that's.
I mean, in all cases, it still would have to follow the, the noise limits of the ordinance, which is implicit in all of this, I assume, like, we don't have to.
What's the noise, what is it for?
It's very low.
It's very low, they, yeah.
Basically, if anyone wants to complain about you, they can complain about it, as the Stonex guys know very well.
A drive, right. A, a car driving by on the road can violate it.
No, I mean, like, the hours, is there hours set in the?
Uh, it's fifty-five decibel, seven to seven and forty-five, or seven AM to seven PM and forty-five, seven PM to seven AM.
If you're comfortable changing it to nine AM, not turning your Christmas music on until nine AM, that eight AM, something, well, something like that, is that?
Yeah, I'm fine not listening to Christmas music until nine AM, I mean, you know.
So nine AM to nine PM? Or nine PM to nine AM cutoff, right?
Sorry, just thinking back to the, we've got between April and October. There's no other monthly ones?
I mean, we, our barn is not insulated, and so it makes it very, uh, yeah, it's very cold.
So you just have the annual event in December, right?
Yeah.
One a year thing, okay.
I mean, our yurt will allow us to do smaller workshops and events year round, but again, that's, that's where the, uh, unlimited workshops and events under twenty-five, yeah.
Year round, got it.
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
So they, they're asking for a change that says only amplified music will be allowed only twice a month and all other times recorded, or acoustic music is permitted on a limited basis at lower volumes. Is that something we are open to?
I mean, we agreed with it in the last one, so I, and it's basically just a repetition.
Yeah.
New area, so.
Would we reference the number of ti- it, what says, instead of all other times, would we reference? I can't remember the numbers we agreed to on the last one.
Per the event limits?
Yeah, per the event limits, that would work. Anything else on six? Do we know what all the changes were, should we, George, need to go back through?
It was a nine, nine AM, uh, nine PM to nine AM cutoff for events and then we will use the applicant's language, amplified music will be allowed only twice a month and at all the times recorded or acoustic music is permitted, uh, on a limited basis at lower volumes per the event limits.
Okay. Any other, do I have a motion?
I'll move that the applicant has, uh, satisfied a reasonable burden of proof of compliance with the criterion for noise and hours of operation.
Second.
Any, well, it's been moved and seconded, any additional discussion? Uh, votes to approve, please raise your hand, votes to disapprove for the same reason, gentlemen.
Next, uh, criterion is that they have sufficient right title or interest to apply and there are two facts proposed, the first is that they submitted a copy of their warranty deed, naming them as the owners and secondly, the town's taxman list also lists, lists them as the owners.
I'll make a motion that the applicant has satisfied the reasonable burden of proof of compliance with the criterion for right title or interest.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? If not, raise your hand of approve, please, four zero.
And, uh, finally on criteria, financial and technical ability, that they have the ability to carry this forward and meet the conditions and criteria. First, they submitted a cost estimate for the improvements of forty-seven thousand five hundred. They stated that they have twenty thousand in cash and equity credit, line of credit for fifty-five thousand and they may apply for an additional loan from the Cooperative Fund of the Northeast. And finally, they have stated that they have prepared a five-year cash flow projection that shows that it's financially sustainable.
Discussion? Well, they're thinking, it, we usually require some kind of statement about the equity line of credit, is there any, did I miss that?
That's what I was gonna.
Backing up the, the fact you have that?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
Well, go ahead, Juliet.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but, yeah, we usually ask for some sort of proof that the financial number is available to the applicant.
Usually a financial institution would provide a letter.
Like a letter saying that the applicant does have this amount.
Yeah, again, a subdivision is a little bit different where it does or even a site plan where it specifies, you have to have.
So that could be the difference, is this.
You have to have this letter of commitment, but this is, you can, if you feel that's important, you don't.
So it's required for site plan review?
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay, so that's what I'm.
Wherever they're doing substantial improvements, obviously, that's where you wanna make sure.
Okay. I'm okay with that then, John.
Okay. Any other comments? So you, basically you're saying that you think it's gonna cost you forty-seven five to do what you need to do by the yurt established and you have seventy-five five available to you?
Yeah, and, I mean, the Cooperative Fund of the Northeast, um, we, we will probably, you know, after going through approval process, then apply for additional loan from the Cooperative Fund of the Northeast. They are very, um, supportive of cooperative ventures, um, and so, yeah, we will have adequate cash to be able to um, do this, you know, we, we could draw on that home equity line of credit, but we prefer to get a, a business loan from the Cooperative Fund of the Northeast.
Okay. Uh, any other discussion? Looking for a motion?
I will make the motion that the applicant has satisfied a reasonable burden of proof of compliance with the criterion for financial and technical ability.
Second that?
Moved and seconded, any additional comments? Vote to appro- approve, please, please raise your hand. Vote to disapprove, and the reason for that is, I think if we're gonna ask other projects to provide it and there's work being done, I, I think it should be, but that's my, my personal opinion, so, uh, it is approved.
And finally, the conditions of approval, uh, it says upon consideration of the criteria, the planning board may by majority vote attached conditions it deems necessary to ensure compliance. Violation of those conditions shall be a violation of the ordinance. So I drafted, uh, possible conditions of approval based on the earlier discussion, which will be modified per the current discussion. First, uh, number one, no more than one annual event with a maximum occupancy of a hundred. Two, no more than two monthly events with a maximum occupancy of fifty. Three, recorded and acoustic, acoustic music only, no amplified bands. Four, cutoff time for all events is nine PM. Five, no parking signs to be posted on Bowie Hill Road during all events. Six, vegetation in the right of way of Bowie Hill, Hill Road to be removed and clearing maintained to achieve a site distance of three hundred and five feet or greater for the main entrance driveway. And we've discussed some additional ones, right?
Yes.
You know, is this where we, uh, once that vegetation for the site requirement has been achieved, get approval from the road commissioner?
So seven would be road commissioner to verify a site distance.
Once vegetation has been removed.
Yeah, and I think it might be important to specify no, of the, certain events cannot happen until that happens.
Could, well, right, that's a condition therefore.
Yep.
It would have to be met.
Yeah, before.
Prior to events.
And, um, uh, specify between the two monthly events with acoustics and the other one, or maybe we don't, never mind, that's not a condition, I apologize.
Well, yeah, I do think that the limits are.
We need to use the same language on annual, monthly, weekly.
Okay, add that in there then?
Yeah, I will, I will modify these per those notes.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure we get all the ones, so the verification by the road commissioner, once the site distances are improved, the cutoff goes from nine PM to nine PM to, uh, between. the cutoff goes from nine PM to nine PM to, uh, between, between nine PM and nine AM. Uh, maintain buffer between road and parking. Uh, you wanted a, John, you wanted a, um, uh, lighting of parking lots limit to eleven PM?
Yeah, we need to repeat it, I mean, is it not good enough where we put it?
Well, we're putting it as a condition of approval, I'm assuming.
Okay.
That's, that's what I'm asking.
That is my desire. I, I thought we'd already done that, but yes.
Yep.
Well, that, yes, I think we voted it, on that as well.
Some ordinance has had that as a standard.
Okay.
Uh, let's see if I missed any.
I think we missed in there.
Okay, so as I stated, what I will do is clean this up and send out, circulate for the board to review and comment on, uh, and once I get your comments back, I'll go ahead and issue the notice of decision with the, with these.
Do you wanna vote on that last one?
Yes, you do.
Uh, a motion, please.
Can, just, uh, so, just to clarify then, the language will reflect the event language we said before, okay.
I'll modify six.
Nine AM, nine PMs.
Yeah, and then the three events a month, two with amplified music.
Yeah, I'll, I'll also circulate it to the applicant and make sure they're good with it.
Yep, I'll make the motion, um, to apply the following or the previous conditions. George mentioned of approval to the permit for conditional use.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further comments? If not, vote to approve by raising your hand. So be it, four zero.
Good.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, we, we're done?
Yeah, you're done.
Oh, yay, great.
Other than doing what you're supposed to do.
So I guess, just one question I do have, just as we were, in our tree farm season, we have, I mean, our annual event is at the end of this month, I mean, we will work to get road citing, but, uh, you know, there's various other things of this that we will be doing over the next period of time. Um, so I just wanna like, you know, I don't wanna get in, in trouble by having this event, which we've had for now six years, um, and so just checking in on that with you all.
I think you have time to cut, like, the biggest ones, the bench, right?
Yeah, we have time to do that, for sure.
Bring the seat over there, or whoever to check if you need to do that, you have time for that, right?
Prioritize on safety.
Yeah.
Well, how much of this apply, you're gonna be, are you saying you're gonna have more than the Christmas tree, uh, sales?
Our annual, I mean, we've been doing the, the craft market with the tree sales for a number of years now, and I mean, now, you know, because, and previously, you know, they had said that was, that was fine as part of, you know, our farm operation without these other conditions of, you know, approval, so I just want, like, we don't wanna, you know.
Yeah, I think just recognizing where this has come from.
Yeah.
Okay, you've been doing those things, you're now asking to add the yard, add the camping, add the community events, so if none of that goes forward, you can continue as you have been under the current approvals.
And we'll get the sidelines cleaned up.
Yep, yeah.
I gotta run to my car, George, be ready.
Okay.
Congratulations, John.
Yeah.
And Merry Christmas.
Yeah, Merry Christmas.
Halloween is still warm, unless, unless that's not.
Thanksgiving is coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, gentlemen, wonder, wonder many of you can move up there and we'll.
These seats are bumpier, guys.
There's another one there, if you'd like agenda. I think we'll just wait for Juliette to return. And she's returned, so our next item of business, new business, completeness review of final plan application with the Deer Creek Crossing subdivision map seven lot thirty-two A. Public comment will not be taken, and Mr. Thabarge.
Yes, for the members of the public that may be watching, uh, I did provide the planning board with some agenda notes as well as the applicant, and the relevant status of the project is that the board granted preliminary subdivision approval on, uh, September seventh. The applicant submitted the final plan application on October nineteenth, and I conducted a preliminary completeness review to help the board make its determination and identified, uh, the following items. Uh, under section six point A C two, the DEP reapproval of the new stream crossing and removal of the existing stream crossing, uh, six point, these are agency, uh, agency reviews specified in the ordinance. Uh, section eight, six point eight C three, the Army Corps of Engineer would be an outside agency review for the approval of the new stream crossing, uh, eight, six point eight C four, MDOT permit for the road entrance, uh, six point eight C five, review comments by the Maine Historic Preservation Commission for Historic Resources, and then the ordinance also specifies under six point eight D, written approval of the street name by the street addressing officer, who is also the code officer. Uh, I did note, again, the title block so that anybody looking at the subdivision plan can identify where this parcel is located based on the tax map, uh, should be in the title block or right near there. Uh, six point nine B sixteen, the proposed method of a financial improvement guarantee, meeting the town attorney requirements, and then finally, uh, six point nine B seventeen, the letter of commitment from a lending institution for the promo- performance guarantee. I did notify the applicant of some of these deficiencies, and the board did receive a supplemental, uh, packet, which I'll let the applicant explain, uh, after publication of this packet. Uh, pages one through three of the final checklist, which I've put in this pa- part of your packet, are the checklist for, uh, final plan application completeness. Uh, and under the section six point eight F, the planning board must make a determination on completeness within thirty days of the receipt of the application, and I've included both a draft letter of completeness and a draft letter of incompleteness for your consideration. Uh, in addition to the applicant supplement, I did receive some additional information, um, after we published. I received, um, and I didn't, I didn't include, but I have received and forwarded to the board a series of communications between myself and the applicant on the status of some of these issues. I also received from the code officer today, uh, an email which I will provide to the board, uh, that basically verifies that, uh, there are no current violations, that the proposed subdivision does not, is not affected by any of the aquifer protection, uh, uh, standards of the ordinance, and finally, that the proposed street name of Deer Creek Crossing is acceptable from an addressing standpoint. And, uh, and I also did receive today, uh, a memo from Will Haskell, the town's engineering peer reviewer. Uh, I have not had time to, uh, process that or discuss it with him, but I think it's important that one relevant, uh, finding that he had was that in his opinion, uh, Army Corps of Engineer, uh, approval is required for the stream crossing, and that obviously is a very time-consuming process. Uh, he suggested, uh, and again, and I would also clarify that the peer reviewer comment input to the board is no different than the town planner. Uh, we are basically advisory to the board, our opinions are not binding on the board, so, uh, the board can consider as important input the peer reviewers', uh, comments, but you're not limited by those comments. And the applicant is obviously encouraged to, uh, to communicate with the peer reviewer, and we anticipate that they would, uh, have opportunity to review the peer reviewer report and respond to it prior to, uh, the next meeting, and have an opportunity to make any and all corrections that they feel are warranted by that review. If there are any in there that they want to dispute, uh, they certainly have the right to, uh, assert to the board that the peer reviewer is wrong on any part of it, uh, and make their case to you.
Can you state that first part about the permit?
Yes, uh, according to, uh, Goral Palmer, uh, is their opinion that an Army Corps of Engineers permit is required for the stream crossing. And I did point out in my notes, uh, as well as communications, I believe, with the applicant, that the board, the applicant has the option of getting a letter of determination from Army Corps or any of the other reviewers, uh, because again, the peer reviewers, that's his opinion based on his experience. If this applicant has different experience and they've gone for five projects and never got an Army Corps permit for this, then he can get a deter- written determination from that agency under the ordinance stating that that, their permit is not required. So I thought that was probably the most critical aspect, uh, time-wise of the, of the application review by the, but then I just wanted to bring it up tonight. I'll be meeting with, uh, with the, um, peer reviewing engineer tomorrow, going over everything and trying to just make sure, uh, he's on the same page with the ordinance. Again, this is the first time, uh, the town has ever had a peer review done of the engineering, uh, so, uh, we're, wanna make sure that it's done right, and, uh, he may modify some of his comments based on my input, and then we will provide that within a matter of days to the applicant, and they can, uh, review those and decide how they wanna respond to them. So hopefully, by next month's meeting, if you determine that it's incomplete, uh, then, uh, they would have the opportunity to work everything out with the, uh, applicant, uh, as well as, uh, uh, excuse me, the peer reviewer. The final two things I'll point out are the, um, uh, performance guarantee. I did indicate what the ordinance says you have to have for a performance guarantee, and the applicants have responded in one of those emails, uh, if not in their supplement, that they are proposing a cash deposit, which meets the requirements of the ordinance. Uh, and, uh, secondly, I did raise, and I have not had a response about the bylaws, and, uh, I did alert the applicant that they have submitted a set of bylaws, and that meets the, uh, completeness. But I did wanna give them the heads up that, uh, the ordinance specifies that the bylaws that they propose have to follow the, uh, town attorneys, yes, town attorney's template, which is intended to make sure that the ma- that the improvements are maintained and that the town has enforcement authority in the event that they're not maintained. If the applicant wants to propose a different bylaws, which they feel addresses the concerns, uh, intended by the attorney's template, they can submit an alternative, and that has to be reviewed by the attorney at the applicant's expense. Uh, so I just, I, to me, those are kind of the main issues that are at stake on, at this level of the, at this stage of the application.
Is, uh, Goral Palmer done with their review?
They have done their review, they've completed, just this afternoon, so, like I said, I haven't even had a time to thoroughly review it, and we'll be meeting with him tomorrow to, to look at it.
Um, any general concerns with the engineering stormwater? Definitely, it sounds like a permit is needed, but like anything?
They had a list.
They had, so, okay.
Okay, so on, on your letter, for my clarification, George is you, two choices, uh, complete or not complete, but on the draft, incomplete, application you list, I guess, ten things.
Yeah.
So you, as you were, as you were discussing, and some things in fact may be complete at this point.
Yeah, and I would suggest, again, giving the applicant an opportunity to respond to what's been presented, and, uh, they, they, in your deliberation on the completeness letter or incomplete letter, you can make any modifications to the draft that you feel appropriate, and we'll, we'll probably both help you with that.
So you're gonna, the applicant's gonna address street name, or he knows that the street name was approved, okay.
Yeah.
As long as somebody talks to me about it, okay.
Yeah.
All right, then, I guess, any comments before we begin from the board? Mister, mister's applicants.
Um, so I don't know if you guys saw this supplemental application, parts that were dealt with there, I think, are the.
Have, excuse me, have we seen that?
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah.
Yeah, what?
There's like the Maine Historic Preservation Commission, um.
Oh, I did, okay, that was part of that.
Yep. I think the big items that are outstanding right now is we're still waiting for the DOT permit. That, that culvert that failed, I think, caused them a little, a little.
Changed their priorities.
Yeah, they, they asked for our stormwater plan, and they've sent that off to their engineer to review it, and so they're digging into that, sounds like, uh, my, 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 my understanding was always that if an Army Corps permit's only necessary if you impact of navigable water, which that stream's clearly not navigable, I have seen situations where they will track a navigable water through a culvert and, and they will, but that's more like a Vernal Pool impact situation that I'd seen in Yarmouth, um, otherwise I've, yeah, I've never had to put Army Corps permit in for a minor stream crossing. So I'll, I'll dig into that and make sure that that I is dotted and T is crossed, um.
Again, agency letter not required, that'll, that'll put that to bed if, if the, if that's your, if that's your position. But generally, just my, my experience and understanding is that they regulate wetlands under the navigable waters because they affect navigable waters, and I think it's the same thing for stream crossings. Years ago, ye- and the, uh, the EPA, and John held me with this if I'm not accurate, but basically EPA, uh, delegated or Congress delegated to the Army Corps of Engineers, EPA promulgated the wetland rules and these types of rules. Army Corps of Engineers regulates it from the federal standpoint, but then they delegate to the states, including Maine DEP, certain authorities up to certain levels, and in the past, I remember twenty-five years ago, that DEP did do all the stream crossings, but apparently in more recent years, Army Corps has said, no, we wanna see all the stream crossings. But again, it's under, not that you're gonna take a boat down that stream, but that stream feeds into streams and into the river that, that.
Sure.
That's how, that's how they stretch their jurisdiction.
They can stretch it, and there's been some battles.
Vernal pools.
Vernal pools are a big deal.
Navigable waters.
So we, we're, we've been talking about, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but can I just bring this up, 'cause it's kind of related? We've been talking about the Army Corps, what about the DEP?
DEP, I submit, so the way NERPA permits by rules work is typically, it's like you submit it, and if you don't hear anything back in two weeks, it's approved. And so that's how the stream crossing permit went, and I'm gonna have to submit another one that sounds like they want one for just impacting over an acre, just when you disturb an acre, um, so I'll put in another NERPA for that, and I'll have that in two weeks.
The peer reviewer has given specific guidance on addressing those issues with DEP.
Does he say, does he say a permit is required from?
A PBR.
He gives a, an indication that what the parameters are for their review and suggests that the applicant provide calculations to verify their position.
Okay.
So, I don't think it does, is not adequate. He wants to see calculations that say how much impervious, how much disturbed.
That's what that email was about.
Yeah, how much developed area on this site.
Okay, well, two things, what, so, while we're on permits, we, we don't know if either DEP is gonna require one or the Corps is gonna require one.
It's not been satisfactorily concluded whether it will or won't.
Okay, so we don't have that inform- Corps.
You do not have the agency sign-offs.
We're still waiting for MHPC, unless we got that already.
They did, they did submit that in their supplement.
And can I ask one, uh, sorry, the wetland delineation that you had done, they covered Vernal pools in that? And he found no Vernal pools, okay. Thank you.
Okay, Charlie, go ahead, you were talking about permits, what else on here?
I think that's about it. The email from the, the Aquifer District, I think, satisfied that, I think the other sign-off is from the fire chief. Something that was, the pond, I believe, has been sized appropriately, and I haven't heard any comments back from that, but.
Yeah, we're talking about the submissions of this stuff here, I mean, they could, what we're here to do tonight is determine if you submitted everything you required, not whether
Right.
the pond's the right size or any of that other stuff, so.
So I think, I think I came in tonight knowing that we, we are incomplete on the grounds of just the DEP and the DOT permit alone. And I think I was just waiting to hear if there's anything else. It sounds like the peer reviewer will have a good list.
That's a good, a good and fair question. Okay, do we have any thing, okay, is there anything else you all wanna say? Okay, any, so, I think we're missing for incompleteness a determination on the stream crossing, either by either DEP and/or the Corps of Engineers. Those are, whether that's one thing or two things, but that's.
A, B, and C are, are correct in the draft letter of incomplete. Uh, DE, D and E have been submitted, uh, F is still outstanding, and G and H are addressed by the applicant supplement.
What was F?
Okay.
I'm sorry.
What was F?
F is the assessor's map and lot number on this, on this recording plot.
The subdivision plot?
Yeah, you had it on all the others, you didn't have on the subject parcel, and it should be in the title block so that people can see automatically where. And it should be in the title block so that people can see automatically where the subdivision is.
Okay, so the discussion, the discussion should be, is it incomplete or complete? And then a vote on that, so it would seem, it seemed to me that we're incomplete.
Correct.
Okay.
I agree.
And we need to, we need to, but is there anything else while they're here that, on this? Not so much substantive review, but is there anything else that we saw that we wanna? If n-
Uh, I would, no, no, nothing else. I'm just wondering if we should talk about timeline here. Like, I think we should give everyone enough time to review everything that's come in today so that when we meet next, we can be ready, everyone can be ready. So I wonder if December will give you enough time to.
That's how these permits come back.
Right.
I mean, if by, if Army Corps says they want to approve this, then who knows?
Yeah, and then all of the comments back from Goral Palmer regarding your engineering.
That stormwater stuff and I've gone back and forth with them in other projects.
Okay, so so I guess December would.
It'll at least be an opportunity to nail down as much of this as possible.
Yep, okay.
So I think the the question before us now is, and we're under this thirty-day gun as well, is a motion at either complete or incomplete and a vote on that, so.
Can I actually ask another process question? If we go forward and we push this to December, can we extend it again? Or can we keep us extending this or is there a limit?
Once you determine completeness, you start the clock of the review sixty days from that point.
So we can keep kicking it?
This won't extend your clock, right, for?
The incomplete can be kicked.
That's right, that's right. Now, let me also point out that procedurally, if if it boils down to this project is all good to go, except for the Army Corps permit, you could grant a conditional approval. If you felt comfortable with that. If you don't feel comfortable with it, you don't have to. Uh, but if that was the only thing that was holding up the project, they could get their approval, work on, you know, everything else they gotta do, get all the legal documents recorded and everything else. And then, once they get the Army Corps permit, actually, they couldn't record the plan because without that, they wouldn't, you know, the project, people couldn't go forward in reliance upon it. So what I'm saying is, there is some flexibility here to work with the applicant on these issues. And it depends how big they are. Maybe the Army Corps is just like, you can't do this without that. We need to know because they could require a whole redesign of their stream crossing.
Can you say again real quick about what CEO said? Is he all good with?
The code officer is good with the project.
With everything, okay.
Proposal, from his standpoint.
His fire chief, much to your.
I haven't gotten any comments back from the fire chief.
And that would come up in substantive review piece of it. So the question today is, um, there are things that we, do we think there are things missing? And George is, I'm going back, we think that it's incomplete because we don't have A on the west DEP crossing. We don't have B on the crossing. We don't have C on the crossing.
On the entrance.
Excuse me, on the entrance, thank you. And then we don't have F, which is the assessor's map. So those four things. So would we need a com- a motion saying that we find it incomplete for a lack of section, you know, those those letters right there? Someone would make a motion with those four things.
I would make that motion that it is incomplete based on those four things that John just listed.
Okay, and then if I could get a second, please?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, those in favor of voting it as incomplete, please raise your hand for zero. So we'll work hard to get everything we need, guys, and we'll see you back in, uh, if you've got it in December.
Yeah.
And work with George if there's, you know, if you need clarification or whatever on it, so.
Yep.
Please. All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
When is the next meeting?
Uh, I don't have a calendar.
December seventh, right?
Is that the first?
December. Nope, nope, sorry.
December seventh is the first Wednesday.
December seventh it is. By the way, those, I guess it's the next to- the next topic then is, we have a survey that George has been working on. And I think it's what we discussed at the information meeting. And where we are on this, George, did you want to do the talking?
You go ahead.
Where we are on it is we have this draft survey that I would like to get your blessing approval vote on. I've shown it to the selectmen. They've not told me to stop, so. Although they did ask me who wrote it and I said, well, I don't know. I think it was George. No, but I said, we had been working on it and a couple of those obviously had been at the informational meeting. So if we can vote on, uh, accepting that, uh, survey is what we want to go forward with. And then the the plan, if everybody agrees, going forward after that is to, uh, they're not planning to vote, uh, to, uh, do surveys at the election. So the town selectmen aren't doing anything. I don't think Conservation Commission is working on it. So on their survey, George has been helping them with that. Historical Commission is, I think, uh, they're working on it. They met this evening. And if you're not doing anything on December sixth at six-thirty, the Conservation Commission is gonna uh, hold their informational meeting like we did. Uh, so you're welcome to go to that. So, um, if you're comfortable with the, and vote yes on the survey that we've done on on affordable housing, uh, I'll, George and I are, we'll put something together. We'll announce it coming soon at the, uh, at the election, have just a little flyer there that says, keep your eyes open for this. We'll take it to the selectmen one last time on the eighth. Uh, but then, and Devin's already worked, uh, said he was, start putting it on the web. So it'll be a Microsoft Forms, uh, survey, uh, that kind of does the tabulation for us, so.
My only concern, sorry, Alan.
Go ahead.
Um, is getting, so like I have very rarely ever checked the, unless I know there's something relevant to me on the Durham, um, blast. Like getting people to actually take a look, like some sort of flyer or reminder or some way to actually distribute the information.
Well, that's part of the attend, it is, that's a good point. So there, that is the, uh, part of the, um, election day. So it'll be there, we'll ask the ladies to say, hey, you know, when you're, when you're done voting, go look. The sample survey will be, will be up there with the, here's where it'll be on the Durham Blast or the the Durham website or whatever to try and.
Will it be like a a hard, uh, something for someone to physically take?
I'll ask. I don't know if they would, if they'll pay for it.
Then you gotta tabulate it. If you're physically going to do it, I'm, I have the same concern is how, how are we educating the townspeople that this is out there? And get that feedback.
Well, there would, is.
Other than, I I don't know that we're gonna be, I don't think we're, are we gonna be sending out a little postcard to all the residents? I don't think we are.
No, well, not, not intended to. I don't, yeah, I don't think the ex- the expense is gonna be there. So really, it is going to be, get it out on the Durham Blast, get it out on the the webpage. If it gets on the Durban, Dur- Durham Blast, then there's two or three people that'll put it on the All Things Durham, which the face, which is not, again, not everybody. But I'm hoping that enough people will walk by it at the election to say that it is in fact, you know, it, this is the, gonna be the survey, keep your eyes open for it, uh, and you can read about it.
Can we get it posted at Get and Go? It always seems to be a place that people visit that don't necessarily.
And I'm willing to take that on. I'm willing to take the, you know, that same kind of tape it to the window there next to the raffle tickets or whatever it may be. Yes, I think that's a good idea.
It's just getting the exposure to residents who don't have it. Some people say, oh, I don't have it. I don't have the internet.
So it doesn't really cover that issue, though.
Does not cover.
It's not gonna be paper. It's just gonna be a sign that says, go to this website.
But at least, right, at least they could be aware of it. Well, I don't have.
No, you're right.
I'm gonna go to my neighbor and at least I can answer the question.
More awareness, but it is like they they don't have the hard copy of the survey, which is an issue, but.
I think it's out there enough. I mean, I'm not sure we can get the money to print, particularly in color. Uh, you know, a thousand of them.
Well, I don't think we want to.
And I don't, and I don't, it seems to me there's an awful lot of people who do. There will be somebody who doesn't. And I guess what we could, you know, say, you know, some little old, look, a little, my ninety-three-year-old mother would take the survey. So I shouldn't say little old lady, but, uh, somebody may come up and say, well, I don't have a computer, but I want to weigh in on this.
Come on over to my house.
Yeah, come on over, or.
Walk you through it. You can answer.
We'll have a couple of surveys there that they could circle or, you know, we won't make that as the primary. But if they come up to the clerk and say, I'd really like to do this, maybe we just have her take their name and we can figure that out. There is name.
Do we think that we want? How can we get the electronic survey available to people that come in, walk in here? Can we have it stationed?
Well, we just have them printed here on the.
Yeah, but we gotta do it electronically.
That would actually vote.
Actually vote on it.
So if somebody wanted to come in.
Oh, I see, so it's not just that.
We got a computer station here. Come over here, you can sit down and you can take the survey.
Hey, Devin, can I borrow you for a second?
I don't know, I.
That's not a bad idea. I've had a lot of.
No, I like it. It's just like, I, I feel like it's becoming a lot of impossibility.
Wait, wait, so why not just, so there's only five questions, right?
Yep.
It's, it won't.
But just, we're just, I don't know where they have been, listen, we've been talking.
I've, I've been following, yeah.
We've been talking about how do we get access to someone who does not have internet at their home if they're coming into the town office on a regular basis?
I think if they're coming in and they want to do the survey, we can print them case by case. So we don't print too many and then we have a whole bunch of extras.
But we don't want it, we don't want it done manually, do we?
But we could, if there's any five.
Yeah, if you get, if you get a hundred or twenty or thirty, that, we could just enter them in.
It might be, yeah.
And we just don't advertise that. We just, we just, if they come up at the election and say, I don't have a computer, the first thought would be, does your son, your daughter, your mother, you know, your ninety-three-year-old mother-in-law, will she let you borrow her computer? And if not, then we can.
Satisfy them.
And I, you know, if we miss twenty people, I mean, if one, we've educated them before the town meeting. There is still a public hearing where they they get that chance. I mean, I want to try to get it out there. You're all, I mean, we're, we've worked very hard to get it out there uh, and get people's input to it.
So the, the other question I have is, if we, the survey's been done and we get a majority that leans one way or the other, is the board going to support that majority?
That comes up to us.
Yeah, I mean, it, they sort of.
We use it as a tool in our toolbox, right?
Yeah, that's my thought. I mean, if we, if we think.
Because I've been, I've, I've looked at it bef- and I've said, wow, I could go this way. Oh, I could go this way, too.
Yeah, and I think that's, that, you know, that's part of it is there's, if there's one, one option that's, you know, in our selective minds, that's dumb. But the other two are there and eighty-five percent of the town says we want option one, two, or three. That can be used, we can, we can as a group say, that's what we want George to write the article and amendment to say is option two.
I am not an expert statistician, thank God. And it, and it's probably good because what you'll find with expert statisticians who do citizen surveys is they will have a survey and they will say, this is within ninety-seventh percentile of of reliability, plus or minus four percent, you know, that kind of stuff. And it's misleading.
It is.
Because, you know, it's, it's, it's never totally representative and it's never totally unbiased. You know, some people won't do the survey because whatever reason. So it's not that scientific, even if it is a very scientific survey. So the way I approach this and have for the last forty years in this realm is to say, look, this is gonna be a survey with the comprehensive plan. You had four hundred people, which is fairly substantial. Do the, do the online survey for a population of four thousand. And what you look for is is there are clear leaning that it's going. So we've got three options here. Uh, in responding to the state initiative requirement on affordable housing, the town can either be less restrictive because the comprehensive plan indicates that this is what the town wants to see happen. And you can be less restrictive than you currently are and less restrictive than the state even says you have to be. So that's one option. In order to promote more housing opportunities for Durham residents. The second option is to say, no, that, you know, there's just too much growth in town. It's, it's, you know, and I, and I'm not suggesting this is legitimate in terms of the real impacts versus the perceived impacts. But the perceived impact is whenever you have houses built, that's gonna raise taxes. That is a perception that affects how people vote. Uh, and then also people think the town's growing too fast and the rural char- character's being lost. That's their perception. Uh, and that's their, that's what they value. And so, and many people have both. People want their kids to be able to live here when they get out of school. But at the same time, they don't want to lose the town's character. So a lot of times they're, and that's where you get those. I, I, I could go either way on this. So what you, what you want to look for is like if eighty percent are saying, be less restrictive. Or if eighty percent are being as, be as restrictive as you can under law, that's a, that's what you can take and really put some, some, you know, support. Say, look, that's the the handwriting on the wall. When you get to town meeting, that's what you're gonna be facing. Either, either in favor of it or whatever you propose. So you can kind of gauge what do you want to present at town meeting. But if, if it's all over the place, if you have as many people on one side, as many people on the other, then you just have to make the call, what do you think's best for the town? And put that before the voters and get it voted up or down.
But I think it's important to note that all we would make, do is make a recommendation to the selectmen who would then say, guys done a great job. We like it. Write the article that way. Or, you know, no, that's not, you know, what we see as the way to go with the, with Durham and as the elected officials, so.
And what community? George write this article after we talk or do we go to the select board and they write the article?
Well, practically speaking, for ordinance stuff, I write the article for them.
Okay.
It's just generic language. Do you, do you favor doing this, you know, responding to the state initiative in this way? And it can be put on as separate warrant articles to give the voters, like they did with marijuana. Give the voters several options. And whichever passes, that's what we do.
Yeah, that, I get, the, the, the selectmen did not want to do that.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is.
Here's the recommended option.
Well.
The impression I got.
I don't know. I kind of like that idea. We can talk more about it once we get results. But, you know, if we, this survey, if we don't get a good representation or B, it is kind of close, then why not have multiple questions?
Well, let's wait until the survey comes.
Right, but I'm just saying, like, I wouldn't throw that out right now, like, I, you know.
Yeah, I'm just saying it's an option.
It's an option.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, there's, there's no, uh, uh, and we're spending time talking to the selectmen and they, I said, they may just say, you know, suck it up and give us one or we'll put it up for two votes. I mean, what are the challenges if two votes is, you know, wait, I voted for the, I want to go back and revote on one of them and do it.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we get the word out. People are gonna, if we get four hundred people to respond to the survey, we'll, there will still be fifty people come to the town meeting and say, hey, what the hell are you talking about? I, this is the first I've ever heard about affordable houses.
You're always gonna get that.
Yep.
What if we have some printed copies? I know we can't collect them during the, um, election, but what if we have printed copies?
The select board.
To hand out.
Yeah, they, they discuss that on, because there were some issues they want to survey on. And my understanding, talking to the town manager and the town clerk, is that it's gonna be chaos. And they don't want to have that interfering with the the voting.
And I mean, I'm thinking just to say, you know, something hanging on a.
They got enough to worry about.
Or something like that in a school thing that says, coming soon, watch for this. It'll be on the Daily Blast, it'll be on the website. And work with, uh, Jill and Heather to get it on the All Things Durham. And, and I'm happy to put, that's a good idea about putting it on the Get and Go door. And, uh, tell them, they, give them Devin's phone number, call Devin. He'll let you come over and use his computer.
All right, what are you thinking about schedule for the survey?
Well, what I had discussed with John is next Tuesday night, when we go to the select board, say, look, if you approve it tonight, you can, we can report to the select board that this survey is ready to roll and get their endorsement to put it on the town's website.
And have it up for a couple?
Okay, so here's a thought. John was suggesting, you know, just have a limited time. But my suggestion is keep it open until you have your public hearing, at least in January.
Well, a public hearing has to be on the article.
Oh, yeah, yeah, for sure.
So I mean, we'd have to pull, we had to close the survey in time.
Or you could just gauge what you have at the time.
I mean, I would think by our January meeting, you know.
Well, people get, my concern is people get through the holidays and then there'll be, all of a sudden, somebody will take interest in it and all of a sudden there'll be a flare-up of additional interest that you wouldn't count if you closed the survey.
I know, but you, so we're gonna vote on it, we're gonna, we are gonna come up with a recommendation for an article and then the survey's still open. That doesn't, makes that, I'm, I'm.
But again, based on, uh. But again, based on, uh, and then you go to the public hearing and you say, look, here's the input that we've gotten. So I'm, I'm suggesting you may wanna keep it open until the public hearing at least. So that people have their opportunity to weigh in, cause that's the other issue. It's not just the, we based it on all, it's that you give maximum opportunity, so nobody can say, I didn't have a chance. You, you didn't consult me. The more you say you had your opportunity, look, we kept the survey going, we had public hearing.
We, we talked about that, yeah, we, we may not agree to disagree today, but it, I mean, if we, the plan is, if we approve it tonight. Devin said he would have it all set to go, selectmen bless him, he turns the switch, so it's.
Yeah, and you can discuss when you wanna cut it.
The other thing is, it's sort of probably on the eighth at the election, it'll still say draft on it. So that, you know, that it's, and maybe words that this is, this is not yet final, but this is, so people can start looking at it. And then the ninth or tenth, whatever, it's.
What, you mean online it'll say draft?
Yeah, I think what John is pointing out is if the, if you do a display at the, at the election, that'll be on the same day as the select board's meeting. To give their, their blessings, so, and it won't be, you know.
Yeah, but it's, it won't be online yet.
Yeah.
No, but when, if, if the, if we say yes, the selectmen, you know, say, good idea. Then we tell Devin, Devin then turns the switch on the ninth and then it's live.
And he's gonna be preparing in, in the meantime.
So he's, and I appreciate George has done a great job of getting us here and I know he's got some other ones going, so.
Can I just ask a quick question about something else? You mentioned the, um, Conservation Commission's having a resource protection hearing or, or meeting.
Yes.
When is that?
Sixth of December, six thirty.
At six thirty, at Eureka?
Yeah, at Eureka.
Okay, thank you.
Are you on the Conservation Commission?
No.
She's retired.
I've retired.
Retired.
Pulled a hand?
Uh, she's a therapist.
Wait, she's still.
Oh, yeah, she's still here.
She stopped caring about bugs and trees, uh. So, before we adjourn, there were, oh, the other thing is the roads, I think that, that's down to two things. One is a statement that says, can only, can only be accepted by the town at a town meeting. And then the other one is we'll clean up the language that takes, um, maintenance agreements out of our hands. And gives it to the road commissioner and code enforcement.
Yeah, just to give you all an update, we've had staff discussions about that, because the code officer and the road commissioner and the town, new town manager. We're concerned with the, the current language in the ordinance is really, really, it's very confusing. And it makes it very difficult for the staff to administer who's responsible, what, what are the standards? Uh, and we had planned back in June before the state.
I think so.
Uh, affordable housing stuff hit us in, in full. We had planned to try to clarify and reduce the road width, but, you know, as you recall. The, now the road width issue is thrown up in the air because if the state does, requires you to do more housing, you know, we were gonna limit it to sixteen feet. Or allow sixteen feet, so what we discussed and decided was, look, if we could just straighten out the administrative problems this round. And just put off the table all the standards, you know, whether these roads have to be paved or not. Whether the, you can do a sixteen foot gravel driveway for one house or not. Let's just say, look, we wanna do two things in this. We wanna make it clear what you have to do, cause right now it's confusing. And number two, reduce the bureaucracy, so that somebody doesn't have to go to the code officer and then go to the road commissioner and then go to the planning board. Just make it one process by one entity, uh, have a staff approval and just reduce the bureaucracy. We don't think you need to do a survey on that or have a, have more informational meetings, it's pretty simple. And that'd just be a big help. And then.
So that's the start of it.
Yeah, and then once the state, we figure out what, what's gonna happen with affordable housing and how that would impact back lots. Uh, and we've, we wanna change some of the language to make it clear how you measure these things, cause it's very confusing.
Okay.
And that'll be next year, maybe.
Okay.
So December, we'll probably talk about it, we'll have some survey feedback back. Sometime in January, uh, Jan- we'll have our January meeting, we'll bless the article, uh, you know, based or. Well, give George guidance on, on how to draft the article, to take the, the, you know, which, which option is the one that's preferred. Uh, and at the same time, there's the other two, uh, housing and historical, excuse me, conservation and historical are doing the same. Kinda thing, we have to hold a public hearing for all four articles.
Right.
So we'll work that schedule out maybe in December.
January, February, I should.
January, February.
Probably early, early February would be good.
First of, first of it, first weekend in April, I'd say, is the meeting and then I think like middle.
Second, like the week after your February planning board meeting, so like that next week.
To have the hearing?
Hopefully it won't be Valentine's Day.
I was just gonna say, also, don't forget there's a big break in there, student break.
Yeah, I mean, we probably just need to start, get whatever's ready, have a meeting, like a knockout R two. And then, cause I think it could be controversial, I mean, it could be long meetings on any of the three historicals. It may be short, I don't, I don't know, but, uh, you know, people have their survey, but, uh, we'll go. So.
Do we need a vote on the survey?
Yeah, if you would, if you would vote to approve the draft, that would be great.
If I could have a motion.
Forward.
I'll make a motion to approve the, sorry.
Sorry, I had one, yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, I feel like informationally, I have no problems, but the. This is gonna maybe sound silly, but the graphic design concerns me a little bit, cause I find it like hard to follow a little bit. And I don't know if that's something that we could address when it goes on the web, or is this the form that would appear on the web?
That's what I put together and frankly, it's just very hard to illustrate in terms of some of the concepts. And trying to fit everything onto one page, you know.
Okay, so, yeah.
That's part of it. They're hard to read because they're very small, but I didn't wanna have a survey. And on the, on the web, we might be able to have larger graphics. But again, problem is you go page to page to page and then you lose track of, of that stuff.
Putting it on the web? Will that be Devon?
Devon. Yeah.
Is there any way to?
And we can, what we can do is, and I talked to Devon about this, is put it on, but not have it go live. Let us all look at it.
Good point.
See how it works before you put it live.
And then vote so they make sure the voting.
Yeah, do a test run, you could all do it to, to do your votes without telling anybody else how you're voting.
So he's gonna start working on it here the next day or two, before the, so that it's ready to go live. But those are good comments, and if you got an idea on how to.
My partner's a graphic designer, so.
Oh, good.
She makes me see things that I don't wanna see. I, I will suggest that, that test run as a condition of approval.
So, we, we, I need a mo- a new motion that includes his test run as a condition of approval. Do I have a motion?
I'll second that.
I'll make the motion, Juliette seconds it, and all in favor, raise a hand. Okay, we now vote to adjourn, all in favor, raise the hand. Devon, we are adjourned.